Three watches or four, five watches, we've all got a different time, I think. But we'll go ahead and call the meeting door. And I welcome the guests, we've got a good turnout tonight. And at this time, we'll have a pledge of allegiance. And make that in the name of the Lord.
Make the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, Mr. Keith, you're going to deliver your vacation.
Most great. Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this day. And Lord, just pray that you'll just help to remind each and every one of us not to be... Just to be mindful, oh Lord, this is the day that you have made, and we are to rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, once again, as we come to each council meeting, Lord, we just ask that you would remember the council. Lord, the mayor, we just thank you, Lord, that they're willing to sacrifice their time to serve the public. And Lord, I pray that you would just help them, remind them not to be self-serving and looking out for their own interests, Lord. And look to only look out for the interest of the public. Lord, we again thank you for them. We just ask that you would just give them divine knowledge, divine wisdom, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Keith. At this time, I recommend that we approve the minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion? April? Francis made the motion, April seconded it, all in favor. We've got a slide open at the children's park at the recreation center. And Larry got an estimate on what it's going to cost. We've got to buy a whole new section for that slide. And the cost is $664.16. And I recommend that we go ahead and order that part. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Paul. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
David, all in favor? We have some floors in the city hall that moisture has gotten through, they're hardwood floors. There's three rooms in there. We probably got a hole that big where water has come up through what we think are some old fire department drains. Fire department used to be over on that side of the building. And the hardwood flooring is rotted. So we need to repair that hardwood floor. And we looked at what would be the cheapest way to do it, just replace the whole thing? Or if we could get the same floor that would match it, just buy what we need to replace and replace that portion of the floor? So London put that floor down, and they're going to be able to order the floor. And she brought some samples down here, and we matched it, and it's just like what we've got. So we won't have any problem matching it. And the cost, not only of material, it's going to be cut tremendously, but the cost of tearing all that hardwood floor out and it glued down and putting new floor down is going to be tripled if we go with a whole new floor. So I'm recommending that we approve labor and material. Now, the labor is estimated, I'm getting another quote on the labor, but I know what the material's going to be. The total's going to run about $2,547, the best I can figure on labor and material to replace that. Three rooms of hardwood floor. Do I have a motion?
Now, when they repair it, they'll seal off that...
They're going to seal...
Try to seal the moisture out. Uh-huh, because that's what costs the worst.
Who says going to do this?
Well, we're going to get the material from London Furniture. And we've got a quote from Brock Palmer, and we're getting one from Rodney itself on the labor.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Francis made a motion to approve it. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank David seconded it, all in favor. And while we're doing that side of the building, I don't think that building, that part of the building's been painted since probably...
ET sales, you think? No, it was painted, where my office is, was painted in '96 or '97. Your office probably wasn't until '97.
But there's a lot of bad places on the wall. Chairs and things have hit it, and it's chipped and everything. So we've got some labor and paint cost checked around with the paint to see, you know, where would be the best place to buy it. It's going to run about $25 to $27 a gallon, depending on where we get it. And then the cost to paint, I think there's six offices, Jan, on that side. The total of that would be $2,425. So I wanted to explain to people. We've talked about money and budget. We did have some money coming in from the gas company, and I'm keeping up with that, making sure that we're trying to spend the money in the worst place where it's needed the worst. And this is not going to affect our budget, because we had money coming in that we didn't know was coming in, and we did include it in our budget. So it's given us a little room to make some repairs that we really need to make. So that's where the money's coming from. Do I have a motion to approve the paint? And the painting?
I'll make it.
Do I have a second?
On this, I'll second it, but who's going to do the labor on this?
Well, Brock has given us an estimate, he does a lot of painting. And the paint, we'll buy that ourselves where we can get it the cheapest. The fifth item on the agenda is...
You need to file a report.
All in favor, I'm sorry. Oh, the fifth item is a recommendation to approve an agreement with the Muni Code. If you will remember, we've been talking about this, this is the third meeting. And what they say is it's getting all of our ordinances going all the way back to the '40s and putting them together in a code book and revising them as they need revised and having hard copies, one for the city and one for our attorney. And also posting them on the website that the public can look and see if they want to know exactly, you know, what's against the law or what's permitted inside the city, and that you'd be able to go there and look. The cost to have these people come in. Now, I did not leave with them. My brother passed away, and I was out of town when the people from Muni Code came. But Scott Hunt, Jan, and Francis, and Scotty, I believe anybody else met with them. And they went back and did some calculations and came back to us with an estimate of what it will take for them to come in and actually go through all of our minute books and put this together. And not only will they pull the ordinances, but their attorneys will look them over and make recommendations as to how they need to be changed that would make them more user-friendly, I guess you'd say. So I recommend that we approve this agreement with Muni Code to where they can get in here and start this process. It's going to be very helpful, not only to the next administration, but if it's kept up, it'll be helpful to all administrations to come. It's going to cost $12,000. This can be paid over a two-year period for equal payments. Plus, there's a $550 per year maintenance fee. So I recommend that we approve this. Do I have a motion?
I'm not going to make a motion. But I don't see why we can't put that in the budget for next year, since I know that we've got extra money. But we're going to have a downtown revitalization, and we may need that money to do that. That's... Somebody else make the motion.
We, now, we have a million to put toward that revitalization. And then, and then we're working on some grants. Getting different things there.
Right.
So are we looking at anything here in the near future to pay off that would free up anywhere? And I know in two years, the Kobe bond, if we pay it off, is there anything else that's... So in two years, we're going to have that bond payment to put for revitalization, unless something else comes up, is that right?
That's right. That's what we planned when we talked about downtown revitalization, that we would have enough money freeing up. Had to borrow the money. So even if we had to borrow it all, we could maybe manage that pay.
Scott, your impression, you were in mayor that day. What's your input on this? I mean, I know we've talked about this, but from an attorney's standpoint, of the advantages or disadvantages, do you think?
I think it'd be extremely helpful, not only to council and the people who work at city hall, the city clerk, Marla, because she's going to be in the position of administrative assistant, but just to the citizens, because we've looked at their website, and the website's tremendous. You can go into any city that's on there, and there's quite a few cities in the state of Alabama that uses the same service. And you can pull up, you know, every ordinance. So if you're just a general citizen of Hamilton, you have a question about can I do this or can I not do this, you can pull it up. And it's, they organize it in a fairly user-friendly manner. So, you know, they've got the table of contents in the index. And we have difficulty with, we have to just go back through our ordinance book and see what all of our past ordinances are. But they're not organized in any particular way other than just this was the year that they were passed. But this would give us a way to be able to say, okay, here's what our zoning laws are, here's what our building code and laws are, here's what our general traffic laws are. And then those kind of things, you can just flip to one section and have it. It'd be a lot easier for anyone in the city of Hamilton to have an understanding about what the ordinances and laws of the city of Hamilton are.
So it would be more accessible just for the person off the street or for us or whomever to come in and find it right then. Now, another question, are there, is there a chance that there will be some of these old ordinances back from 1940s or whenever that possibly are non-existent now? I mean, or out of date or whatever, we don't know that. I know that Jan has to hunt, hunt, and hunt for this stuff, because it's, there's no system to it.
Yeah, that's one of the...
And this gives us a system.
The benefits is that's an additional service that have... The last time we ratified our ordinances was in 1943, if I'm not mistaken. And it's a book that we have at city hall, which is extremely convenient to look at. But they go back to '43. And so all those old laws that may well be on the books but have been superseded, you know, they'll do all that mixing and matching to see what we have now or bring it to our attention, what we have. We could do that same thing, but we, I mean, it would cost tremendous amount of man-hours for the city to do that when they're going to offer to do it.
But would there be any reason why we can't put it in the budget for next year? Which will be coming up in October, it's not that long.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume the price is the same, but...
Do you touch? That's my opinion on it.
Well, let me ask you this. Are those cities in the state of Alabama that was $50, $60, whatever, we had a whole page of, are they, some of those comparable to Hamilton's population, along the same population?
Yes, ma'am, if I'm not mistaken, there were several that were larger. There were some, you know, that were smaller, but most it seemed like sort of fit into our sort of ordinance on population side.
Oh, there it is.
If it's doing...
If it's quarterly payments anyway, and you're talking, the first quarter payment is $3,000, you've just spent about nearly that much for two things already.
Well, and one of the points has not been brought out here. And that is the time that it takes Jan and Scott to research. When we have something come up that we have to research and the hours that it takes, that takes her time away from her job. And, you know, they're saying we need extra help. Well, here is some extra help without having to hire somebody permanently. So that's the way I'm looking at it. In the long run, it's cost-effective to do it, because you're giving them time to do something else instead of hunt something that should be at their favor.
But right now, for some, it would be just about $3,000 or something?
Well, probably this won't be paid for until next budget year anyway. By the time they get in here, get it researched and put it together, I would say we're looking at our term being out before. Don't you think, Jan? Yeah.
Hopefully, she got...
So, you know, if we approve it tonight, and they get it on their agenda to come in here and do the research, it may not get done until October.
Well, it helps the police officers. I've had the other gentleman. For some time, the police officers have said, you know, how good it would be if they had access to the ordinances, because, you know, it's hard for them to even know what all...
Well, the chief is here.
It would make their job easier.
Yeah, let's hear from you. I'd like to hear what you've got to say about it. You're familiar with...
As far as organizing the ordinances, I think it's an important first step in becoming a city that is professionally run. I think it absolutely has to be done. The fact that it will probably carry over into next year's budget is just what my predecessor, Regger, said, strategic planning. I think you have to do it. The longer you delay it, the more quagmire it becomes.
My little claim with this is it's really a benefit for the citizens. Because as a citizen, when I have a question about something, I don't want to have to call up here and get a call two or three days later or weeks later about what the answer is. I want them to go online, click on it, and it tells me. I mean, it's really just an outdated thing that we should have been done years ago.
Ultimately, it provides a fair system for enforcing it, for applying the law. And I know I talk about code enforcement and personnel or some people using doing that kind of function. It's a way of doing it fairly and letting the citizens know what the ordinances are so that they can comply with them from the start as opposed to having someone knocking on your door and saying, you did all this wrong. So I think it's just being proactive in making the city move forward.
Well, you mentioned the money a while ago. Well, we got that $122,000 from the gas company, first time in three years. So we're not going to be in stride regarding this. And I can promise you, there probably won't be any monies paid toward it until next time. All this is just to prove it. Because this is going to take them forever, well, not forever, but several weeks and months. You know, of course, you know me, I'd like things to be done.
I'm not against it. I just think it's always be put in the budget when we make out our next budget.
Okay, oh, I fast forward, I recommend it, and I have a motion on the table to approve it. Do I have a second? April made the motion.
I'll second. Paul, got it, that's fine.
Okay, all in favor? One, nine. Got it. Recommendation for immediate consideration of ordinance number 20128. And that's the Tuck property that we discussed last meeting. We had our public hearing last meeting, so it was not necessary that we have another public hearing. But at that meeting, it was brought to our attention that we were rezoning the entire acreage, and I believe it was 17 acres. And Mr. Tuck really didn't have a problem with the recommendation that we just rezone that acreage where the manufactured home was sitting. And that is .91 acres, as the survey shows. So we have that description in that survey. So I'm asking for a motion for immediate consideration of the Tuck properties, .91 acres to be rezoned from an R1 to a R4. Do I have a motion? April, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank David, all in favor? And now, I need to, I'll recommend that we approve the ordinance. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank David, do I have a second? Francis, all in favor? We have a, something that came out of Montgomery, an ordinance for a sales tax holiday for severe weather preparedness. And they're asking the municipalities to consider having a sales tax holiday for people to buy their batteries and what have you to get prepared for tornado season. Fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, duct tape, phone batteries, weather radios. So I think water, water. So at this time, I recommend that we have immediate consideration of ordinance number 20129 to allow for a sales tax holiday for severe weather preparedness on July 6th through July 8th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I think that said too, that'd be items at a sale price of $60 or less per night.
You have $60, I guess that's right.
I'll make a motion.
Thank David, do I have a second? All, all in favor?
Ma'am, just add, this is for one, this is for one in July.
One in July.
And what I understand from the state, they are recommended to do it again in February. But tonight, we're voting on just the one in July. Because, you know, the regular sales tax holiday that we have, of course, through is Christmas. Is continuous. We voted, y'all voted to make it continuous, but...
This is a one-time...
This is just, it's not a one-time. They're going to come back and operate in February. But tonight, y'all were just voting on the July, so y'all can consider if you want to do it again in February.
So we have immediate consideration. Now, number nine is a recommendation to approve the ordinance. Do I have a motion? Francis, do I have a second? April, all in favor? Thank David? Recommendation, number 10, recommendation to approve renewing the lease between the city of Hamilton and the Marion County Farmers Market for the eastern one half of the old fire station building in western for a period of five years. That building was not being used. And five years ago, the Department of Agriculture granted a grant to the city to fix up that building and lease the bay area to the farmers market. And they've been there five years. And they're going to be opening up again this weekend for this year. And they asked us to consider renewing that lease for another five years. And I recommend that we do so. Do I have a motion? Oh, do I have a second? Thank David, all in favor?
Whenever they open, you better get there earlier, because they run out quite pissing.
Oh, and this, yes.
Just to clarify, the sales tax holiday that we normally see for like education that comes in, y'all will still be doing that.
Wait, that's a continuing...
That's a continuing thing. Don't want people to be confused.
Right, this is just for weather preparedness material.
And you'll also do it other than later.
Yes.
They'll have to auction later in February whether or not they do it.
The weather thing, I can promise, yeah, yeah.
Are there any more comments from the public that we have here tonight? Anybody like to spread?
I have, I have one question. Y'all were talking earlier about the ordinances. We'll put them online, we have it all, great idea, updates, fantastic idea. These ordinances, are they included for the building permits, legal codes, building codes, loving codes for Hamilton, Alabama?
I was not in the meeting, but I believe they said it would, yes. Any other comment?
I just have one, one comment and a large discussion on the code setting it up to where it'd be accessible to everyone. Is this where we set up? Just like Mr. Frank talked about there? It has to be in the budget. Is the $500 just understood that that's what it's going to take each year?
Yeah, what that is, what that is...
Or update it?
Yeah, it depends on how many ordinances we have that we've revised during the year and how many new ones we may have approved and everything. But if I understood it, y'all were at the meeting, that is an annual fee for updating.
I saw $500.
Would each save up to that? Do you need to know the amount?
I've got, I've got it there. I think my poster is here, I saw it. Just a minute, you've got the original copy that I wrote down. But I think, I think it's a set fee of $550 a year to update.
What, did you do anything or not?
That's what I've given. But if they want to increase, then it would be on a annual basis, is what you're talking about.
Excuse me, is that not keeping the website, bringing, keeping the website up to date regarding all of this that we're talking about? And that would be, that would be anything on our part, would it? The way I understood.
And most people don't update, most cities don't update with them once or twice a year.
Right.
So much per page.
So a year after, it might be $600, $700.
Well...
But if we sign a contract, if we sign a contract, $550, that's... But the length of that contract, that's what it's going to be.
Right, that's what I've given.
And at the end of that contract, they do anything you want to, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, we'll make, we'll get all that cleared up. Like I said, I didn't attend the meeting, but I did go over the paperwork. And I believe I understood it was $550 a year to keep it maintained. But that is the computer part of it too, you know, the online world.
And therefore, then they will send the information, I'm sure hard copies, put in for you here at the city hall, Jan, and the police chief.
The attorney.
And the attorney.
It needs to be on the internet, and I'm also, Mr. Phil, it's on the city website, hopefully. Plus, there'll be two copies here in the city hall. Paper copies, we have two.
Was it two or three?
Two copies.
The two are copies.
We could buy more hard copies.
Any more discussion about it? If not, go ahead, your motion to adjourn.
Your motion, April, second. Paul, all in favor? We're going to meet with the county commission now. It's not part of our regular...
There ain't no way I can prove it. It can be that. But I mean, the best way to do it is the concrete, I agree. But I come to it with a paper.
But let me just say, I don't even know what you're talking about. I've not seen it. But we've got somebody here from the historical society, and they will explain it to us, I'm sure. Ms. Sensi, will you explain it to Bobby?
As in the concrete, $20 to $25,000. What you can take out?
Do you have a drawing?
You want to get it?
My Jean, would you mind explaining it to us all, what you got there?
Well, I just talked with Kenneth after the historical meeting last Monday night to draw something up for us. And we kind of walked over the properties to...
My Jean, Kenneth, who? Tell us, David.
Kenneth, Kenneth Westbrook High, walking over the property and kind of, I kind of suggested what I would like to say done out there. And he's, he's got it drawn up here. He looks rather nice to me. But I'm speaking for myself, and I would not settle for anything other than concrete.
Can we look at it?
Yes.
You can look at it.
I wouldn't like to ask...
That's at the Hamilton house?
Yes, at the Hamilton Sullivan's house. We fixed, there is a oak tree as you turn into the drive that will need like a curve around it. And he has, he has that fixed on there. And maybe just as you drive in, there will be like a couple of parking spaces there. And then the concrete will go along the side of the... And then the concrete will go along the side of the commission's properties down, just, just well, all the way down beside of their office there. And it will then have a parking area out in the back. And in this agreement, we would like for some kind of, I don't know if we would use shrubbery or if we would use like a, some kind of wall to cover those old store buildings that's in the back that looks really ugly from our historical site. And we would like to see something done with that. And we would agree to the commission parking there, we would take the fence down. If they'll do it in concrete, and that's, that's the way it will have to be. That's from the Historical Societies.
How many spaces more of parking would that give you?
Well, it's not that it would give us any more, it would just, uh-
Enhance the area?
Yes, yes.
How much more parking is it going to give the commission?
Well, it would give them a lot. There would be like two places right there, right beside if you come in the drive. And then it's just according to how far they, we talked about all the way from down, those old buildings there. And then about, I guess about three right there in the big oak tree, and then all the way over to their, their properties.
Is the fence the property line?
Yes.
Okay, that belongs to-
The fences are on the other. Then we'll pay for it, what he does, what he says. But we don't care about the fence, we don't care, we don't care for stuff. We don't care about it. We just like to make the place look better. I don't think, I don't think it's going to go on paying them ten or twelve thousand dollars. I have the job, we're parking it, church parking lot, just like they do up on Sunday.
Well, the message that we got that, you know, the commission was wanting-
We're talking about saving it, we're talking about torn flag, asphalt or something.
Oh, we don't want torn flag.
What's the reason?
You probably ain't going to get it then, do that.
What's the reason that happens to torn flags?
Well, I just think it would, that would-
You're right. Look, they could spend about a hundred thousand and a half that day, too.
Well, we're painting them tonight.
We can't, you can't, concrete and stuff like that, the county commission pays just parts or two on it. I mean, asphalt would be good, maybe, especially over what it is now.
Well, that's just entirely, you know, everybody's opinion, and our opinion is that we're going to have the concrete and, you know, you don't want to do that, that's fine, but you just let the fence there.
The fence is there. But we don't care, honestly, we don't care if the fence is there or not, it don't bother us.
Well, what you just approached that, you know, that he was wanting the fence taken down, and that's all we know. And so you'd have more parking.
It ain't going to help us parking, man.
That's okay, that's, that's fine, but us-
Well, you know, when I attended the commission meeting, Don Barlow brought it up to me.
Yeah, I'm about to pay it, we brought it up today.
Um, and it had never been discussed in a council meeting.
Huh?
And I don't know how this council feels about it, but I do know that the city has made a major investment in that house in buying it. And we, we turned it over to the Historical Society to renovate it. And I attended a meeting last week where they're about to start, I mean, they've already got the chimney fixed, and they're, they're hiring somebody right away, they've got three bids to do the boards and do the painting, and you're going to see some things happen out there, it's going to look nice.
It'll be good.
And they're making a major investment.
And it'd be better for concrete, what I'm seeing, we can't pay for it.
What I'm saying is they're making a major investment, we've made a major investment. You know, that, that's just where I'm going to stay with it.
Yeah, I agree with you, you sure are. But I don't, I don't think we'll agree concrete. They would, they would pay it though, I don't know, don't you either, concrete? But the concrete, I don't think they'll reach out that far.
Kenny, do they have the money or what's, what's the other reason?
Well, yes.
I mean, I, I'm just, I'm asking for conversation because I don't know.
We don't have money to do it all like that. I mean, we can reach back, get enough, get over pay it, we got the paving rig and everything to do it. We don't concrete, we ain't got nobody to do it, we just have to hard do it ourselves.
Well-
A lot of difference.
Man, we got, everybody's got to get together with this. This is not just the Hamilton Historical Society, this is the Marion County Historical Society. This is one thing that has held Hamilton back all these years is the lack of cooperation. I am about to get tired of seeing people act like heady little kids when a good investment like that would pay off for everybody. I just, I mean- That house being renovated is history to every child in Marion County. What Julie was just talking about. And, you know, I don't understand, the city's made a big investment, the Historical Society's making a big investment. Why that a few thousand dollars for the commission, and you're asking for a parking place? You've been asking for a parking place.
I just didn't want to tell me, we'll pay it, but I'm sure they're not going to approve the concrete.
Well, Ed, what's your opinion?
But we, we can ask, is all we can do.
That's all, we're just two people, and we can't bring it up to them.
We brought it up this morning, we talked about it, and they said, "Yeah." They needed to, we come to meet, man.
We appreciate your time.
We take the fence down and they can pay it. They're not going to let me, they're not going to spend the money in concrete.
What's the estimate to, to concrete?
Twenty-five to thirty thousand.
Now, the section in front of you there, and we do park over there to go to church sometimes, but you use ours, too. So, see, we're sharing, we're sharing, so that is concrete, isn't it?
Church is well in front of there.
I know, in front of your building, your building.
It is concrete.
How many more spots do you, how many more spots do you need of parking, Kenny?
We're over there?
Uh-huh.
We don't need, we park across, they park across the street most of the time.
Well, I thought that was one reason that you all were going along with it, was getting more parking space.
We just have y'all on us, too, a little. But they ain't telling me nothing about agreeing to do no concrete.
Well, if it's just for looks, it looks fine like it is.
Pardon?
I said, if it's just for looks, asphalt's not going to help the looks, in my opinion.
No, not at all.
Your church, you got asphalt.
Yes, Mr. Lewis?
I just like to make one statement and maybe go no further. But I believe the entire county commissioner had to agree to purchase that property. And they knew how much property was there. And it's the busiest intersection in Hamilton, forty-three and two seventy-eight. Now, you know, it don't seem like the city or county can ever get together on anything. But the Historical Society, I don't think needs to be given property for other people to have access, and that'd be another problem. When this takes place, you're going to have to agree on hours or times that it can be used and all this good stuff. And I'd say if they could get along with it just like it is, would be the solution. But if I bought a piece of property and didn't have room to park my vehicle, then I'd be living with it, I believe. Unless my labor wanted to deal with it.
Well, I know we, we need to work together if we can.
I ain't telling you won't, I just can't tell you we have concrete. I mean, I, I don't know, I come down here to tell you we could pay it for you. Take the fence down.
I think this effort was made, if I, if I'm not misunderstanding the Historical Society because y'all have to park over there, and they're trying to accommodate that at the same time, get it fixed the way they would like to see it fixed.
Oh, yeah, I know, the concrete looks a lot better.
Am I wrong on that, Historical Society?
No, we, it's ultimately your decision as to what you're going to do because it's your property. We just, we just say it, making recommendations.
They have to play and park, you go in there and see it. Be going both, going out there parking area. Hey, y'all need to come down here and tell you we pay it for you, that's important, and it can go without another vote.
Well, we understand that.
What does the Historical Society plan to do about parking if they're not going to, they're checking on the concrete?
Well, that's, you know, I don't, we don't know how far down the road that is. We'll, that help will have to be addressed at some, at some point, we'll, we'll need a few parking spaces. You know, it depends on how, how the, what use we plan to make for the property of us and the city, what, you know, how we plan to use the property, so still a lot of questions there.
Will it be a lot of visitors weekend?
No, don't know.
See, if you do, you can use it all night on the weekend. We have a curfew on Sunday.